Okay, I'd like to call the January 21st meeting of the Playing Board of the Town of Newbury to order. And I am John Weiss. To my right is...
John O'Connell.
Martha Taylor.
Elizabeth Mitchell.
Kathleen Pearson.
George Morris.
Richard Ross.
And so we do have this evening, at 7:15, a time certain public hearing, site plan review for 23-31 Sled Road for a storage facility. And so anticipating that's a time certain, we'll have a few other items kind of leading up to that. I think the first of which is to tell the public and others that we have a resignation from the board, from Kathleen Pearson, which we accept regrettably. Kathleen has been on the board for 10 years?
Not consecutively, but over 10 years.
10 years. And during that period of time has contributed enormously her time and effort to this town and to the board. Some of her most recent accomplishments included redoing of the zoning code and a number of other things that kept us pressing the site plan review process as well. And that's just the stuff I know about, and I've only been here for three years.
Oh, you're good. Not even my thesis was much more important.
Oh, and then it was the thesis, because of course I worked with you on that. But the thesis was an analysis of water possibilities and the resultant potential for development along Route 1 if we did get water, and how many square feet of development we could get. It was a really a very, very important study, and selectmen have looked at it, and we've looked at it, and we think it's an important study. So we resect-- I guess it's me. I accept your resignation with a heavy heart, I will admit, and we will have to then come up with a substitute soon. And it's as of-- just for everyone knows, it's as of February 1st, which is Super Bowl Sunday. A new-- which has a whole new meaning, doesn't it? So anyway, but thanks, Kathleen, and best of luck in what you're doing, and I know that you need to do this, so.
I'll miss you all.
So let's have some liaison reports first. Board of Selectmen, anybody? Not much, has there?
No, not really.
The last meeting we had, the joint meeting, you all remember, was where we had to meet and then disband because there was not a quorum on the part of the Board of Selectmen.
A super majority.
Super majority, right. Excuse me, thank you. And that meeting has been now pushed to February...
February 18th.
18.
So it'll be a joint meeting.
Which will be a joint meeting at our meeting on February 18th to go over the yoga studio. I was not sure if that's on the list here. Can I ask the question of whether or not those meetings have been set up with the engineer for the-- from the yoga studio?
That we had...
You did have that meeting?
Yes.
You did?
I think it went pretty well.
You thought it went well?
Yeah, it's gonna happen. I mean, they're together.
Good, good.
They're not quite, but it's...
There's no disagreement.
Because there were-- right, okay. But that's important to get from where they were.
Oh, yeah, they were like this before.
You know, and pretty far apart, so...
But no, I think...
That's good to hear. And I think everybody wants to see it happen. It's just a question of that. It is a challenge, because the site is so tight.
Just the kind of project we wanted to see.
Yep, okay. MVPC, you all helped in contributing to comments that I then relayed to Dennis DiZoglio, who's the executive director of MVPC. They had a public hearing on the growth strategy plan for the Merrimack Valley last when-- Thursday night. As you can expect in some of these things, it was a snowy night, it was a sleety night, and there was no public who attended a public hearing. But we did talk about the issues, and I'm waiting to hear back from Mike, who's the planner in charge of that section, and see whether he accepted our comments. But I very much appreciate everybody's contribution to that. I also heard from Gerard Witton. Gerard is in charge of the MIMAP process, which is a really marvelous mapping technique. And since we have lost David, who was very adept at it, and Kathleen, who is also very adept at it, I've asked him to schedule a training session for anybody who would like it. And so I went, got back to him, and asked him what days were best for him, or nights, or anything sometime in March. So-- and anyone can do it, even people on the Selectmen can do it if they'd like to.
If I should...
So we'll look forward to hearing back from Gerard, and hopefully we can organize something for mid-March or something like that.
And he is, if I can just add, he's thinking about trying to schedule it if it works for everybody over in the Triton Computer Lab, so that everybody has a computer to actually have a hands-on experience.
To work on.
Because just watching it really doesn't help very much.
You'll forget.
You forget, you forget. So it's really worthwhile. Have you ever tried to use it?
No, I was just gonna ask though, in fact, I asked Martha about it. Will it work? Do you have to have a PC, or will it work on a Mac?
Actually, John can answer that question.
I'm having some difficulty, but I haven't really worked hard at it yet.
Gerard?
Because I've relied on Kathleen and David for all this time.
Oh, that explains it.
He told-- I actually asked him about this a while ago, and he said it does work.
Okay.
What he's recommended, if you can do it instead of using Safari, is use-- download Firefox.
Firefox will work on a Mac.
Yeah, so try it with Firefox.
Right, right. And so I have been able to use it on certain occasions, but I've always thought that there was something else I could use it for, or it would be easier, and it wasn't. So I'm looking forward to taking the classes again myself.
You're gonna use it every time an application comes in, you're gonna go to your computer and just call it up, and you'll see the site, and you'll get an idea of the butters and size of property. It's very, very handy.
Through MIMAP, you can get aerial views of the property, and then get into pictometry so that you can also get three-dimensional views from all sides.
It sounds like it'd be very useful.
And it's tremendously useful. You can take measurements if you need to. There is also, they have a mobile version, which I'm kind of testing now. I've just had a chance to check it out, but I haven't really worked with it. So if you have an iPad, we might also be able to get it going on that.
And MVPC, I think I handed out at last, maybe a month ago session, that they are having the planning, training sessions again in the spring, I think in April, for board members, et cetera. So hopefully you've held on to that, but if not, I'm sure they'll get another one back to me to make available to you. Concom, do you can report on it?
The big thing was what we're gonna hear tonight. I expect it'll be precisely what we heard last night.
Okay.
So that was a big deal. We have, as I said, a site visit scheduled for a week from Tuesday, last Tuesday.
And what time-- what time is that, so we can...
3:00 in the afternoon.
Okay, at 3:00 PM.
Yep.
Okay, so we're-- well, we'll talk about that. And anything on ZBA?
No, they need the 5th.
5th?
February.
So we'll need a new liaison.
I will not be attending, if that's what you're asking me.
That's right. And might I ask, where are we with the recasting the accessory apartment docks?
That hasn't really gotten...
You didn't want me to ask that?
I knew you were going to. I do have Sam's feedback from the zoning, the ZBA meeting that we had.
You do?
But, which I was gonna hand out when we get to that part of the agenda, but I have not yet.
You have been otherwise occupied with the trial and a couple of other things, so I think that's understandable. The only thing is that that is an item we wanted to bring to Springtown meeting. So maybe after we get, maybe today, if we can get the RFP for the master plan resolved and out, that we can get back on that and start working on it.
And the subdivision rules and regs that are three years old.
I thought that we were moving ahead on-- you have.
Yeah, we have. John and I met about a few things coming up, so I need to...
I agree, I agree.
Are we ready to send them out for comments? Well, for review first, I wanna...
As soon as I pick up what you and I talked about. As soon as I pick up what you and I talked about.
But I think it's in your hands, because I've submitted all of my comments, I think, to date.
Right, right.
Anybody else felt that they needed to submit anything? I think that we've got all board members' comments have been gone to John.
Good.
Nothing else from the ZBA? All right, then, let's start old, ongoing business. Caldwell Farm Trail. I think we reported last time that the parties involved with the potential encroachment of-- and a butter onto the Caldwell Farm property. I've been led to believe by the board members of the HOA, or is it a...
HOA.
It is an HOA. For Caldwell Farm, that they have resolved those issues. I have contacted Cliff Irons, who has been appointed as the point person for the project on the trail, and they will meet on the 4th and discuss us coming out to a meeting to talk about the next step. We, as a board, and the Conservation Commission, the conservation agent, who has the responsibility for building the trail, are, after investigating options, are convinced that the original alternative we had of getting into the trail area near the fire...
The hydrant.
The hydrant on the eastern part of Elm Street makes the most sense, and so we'll be presenting that again and see how we go. You have anything else on Caldwell?
No, I think that's it.
Master plan. I don't want to start that, because I think that that will take some time. Why don't we go to Woodbridge? Yeah, let's do Woodbridge School. Did everybody get the new design of the single-family structure? It's good.
Does anybody want to see the old one? Or do you... I haven't seen...
The new one, all I have is the new one.
I haven't seen the new one yet.
It's a...
Let's see the old one and the new one, side by side.
Well, yeah, let's do that. The new one is a bit more of a Greek revival and a...
Is that the only change that she's made?
Well, it's the exterior.
The architectural rendering or something?
The only change is the exterior change.
It was a gambrel before.
It was more like a cottage.
So it's much larger?
No, I think not. I think it's about the same.
So this was the original...
So...
No, that was a gambrel over there.
This was kind of reminiscent of maybe a couple of homes on the street. It had really nothing to do-- it almost turned its back on the school. We mentioned that to them when they came in, and because we weren't doing design review, we kind of suggested that they do it. So I'm very happy that they've changed it. I think it goes much better with...
I was gonna say, the new building looks much better with the school.
Yeah, so does everybody have this? This is what Elizabeth has here.
Yeah, go ahead.
You've all seen that?
Yes.
Right, you've seen it?
I've seen it now.
You've seen it?
Does my car-- no.
No, it's Elizabeth's. I'm just kind of...
Yeah, okay.
Martha, as far as, not architecturally, but as far as sign and setbacks and all that, nothing has changed?
I don't think they've changed anything as far-- they didn't, she didn't give me any information on the site, but it looks like it's exactly the same.
Because that would be the concern, right? I mean, I would hope that this isn't trying to squeeze in more square footage.
No, no, I think it's, I really think it's just a redesign of the exterior without any increase in square footage.
Did you have any reaction to some of the comments that you made in the email out about the location of it being on, what was it, 2...
The address.
Yeah, 2 Graham Ave. We just talked about it very briefly, and I know that this is something that came up a few months ago, because it was being marketed as 2 Graham Ave.
I thought that's an illegal address according to the Census Department.
Well, we don't, yeah, I mean, it really should be 33 High Road, Unit 4.
Right.
So I just wanted to bring it up again and make sure that the board is in, you know, all in concurrence with that.
That that's the right address.
The only question I have is, would the fire department agree and the police for 911 emergencies? I know I had to change my address, because my house was, I have a corner lot, and my...
Oh, right.
Because that driveway is actually gonna be off.
It will be off of Graham Ave.
I don't know, so I'm just saying, I don't know.
So I don't think, I don't think that's our call, is it?
No, it's their call.
It's their call? So what do we need to do on this? Just say we're okay with it?
Yeah, just say we're okay with it.
Do we need to take a vote on it?
If you'd like.
Okay. I have a...
Well, you have to make a motion and discussion, or is that what we do?
Yeah, do you want to make a motion? Anyone make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Too.
That we accept, are we accepting or changes?
Yeah, do we accept the changes?
Okay.
And then, I need a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it?
Discussion. I want to accept it, but I don't want, I want to confirm that it's not a larger building.
Okay.
And that it doesn't intrude on, the setbacks are the same.
Fine.
Because that was one of the things we were negotiating before.
So it's a condition of acceptance?
Yes.
Everyone, any comments on those?
None.
Agree with those?
Agree.
I do too. John?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else by any board member?
No.
Okay. Okay, then, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So we will open up the public hearing for 21-23 Sled Road. Do we, I think we need to read something, am I right?
Yes.
And who does that fall to?
Our clerk.
Who is?
George.
George.
George!
Yes, it is.
So bear with us while we read this.
This will only take about six minutes of read.
She hasn't been, she hasn't been electified the board to be the clerk.
She will soon be.
Okay. Town of Newbury Planning Board, public hearing notice. Our residents of the Town of Newbury and other interested persons, please note that on Wednesday, January 21, 2015, at 7:15 PM at the Newbury Town Hall, 25 High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts, the Newbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing for site plan review approval for development of a self-storage facility on the property at 23 Sled Road and 31 Sled Road. Map R36, Parcels 24 and 23, as shown on the plan entitled, quote, "Plan of Land in Newbury, Mass, Showing Proposed Site Improvements at 23 and 31 Sled Road," quote, dated December 10, 2014, and described in supporting documents prepared by Millennium Engineering, Inc., for Stowaway Storage Newbury, LLC, doing business as Newbury Self-Storage, 11 Fartherland Drive, Byfield, Massachusetts. The application is on file for review during regular business hours with the town clerk and in the planning office, 25 High Road, Newbury, Massachusetts. For more information, contact the planning office at (978) 465-0862, extension 312. All persons interested or wishing to be heard relative to the proposed development should appear at the time and place designated above. Signed, John Weiss, Chair, Newbury Planning Board.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
So you may come up and introduce yourself and give us a presentation. I know we met a month ago or two weeks ago, and you outlined what you were doing. We accepted the application at that time. And so if you could just remember, give us your name, and then you always need to speak into the mic, and then if you all want to join him, you'll need to grab the mic, and so otherwise you won't be heard.
It's for the TV viewers.
It's for the TV viewers.
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name's Eric Bodeman with Millennium Engineering. I have with me Bill D. Francisco, who is the owner, and Jim Donato, who is Bill's expert on self-storage facilities. I guess I should start by giving Martha the green cards?
Yes, please. And I have the tear sheets from the Daily News.
Okay, I attach those.
Thank you.
So I guess I'll go back through kind of what we went through a month ago when we presented the application. The site is approximately 56 acres, 20 of it is uplands. We propose to do eight self-storage buildings. Each building is roughly 7,000, a bit more than 7,000 square feet. There's, the property is surrounded, as you can see, by Newbury Port Turnpike, which is Route 1, Boston Road, and Sled Road to the north. Sled Road is not going to be used for access. All the access is gonna be off of Route 1, and that's partially because those who are familiar with the site know the Sled Road is not really a developed road. And we did meet with Mass DOT, and they did not like the site distance at the Sled Road end of the property, so that's why we have the access where we have it on the site. And we do need to, eventually in the process, we would need to get Mass DOT access permit for accessing Route 1. So this is the, this is the plan that I had showed you about a month ago. It shows the eight, eight buildings. There's two constructed wetlands, which will handle all of the stormwater management. There will be gated access here with a key entry. Excuse me. There basically is, we're, something that Bill and I need to still resolve is, the project is probably gonna be a two-phase project, and I think we discussed that the last time, is he's gonna do three or four buildings first, try to get those leased out, and then continue on with the rest of the project. Last night, we were in front of the Concom, and it came up about clearing the site. The site's gonna require roughly 15,000 to 17,000 yards of fill. The site's gonna be raised up because it's so ledgey, rather than trying to blast the ledge and dig the ledge out. We believe at this point that what's gonna happen is we're gonna clear just the whole site, so that when fill is available, you'll be able to bring the fill in, in store, and start spreading it around. Fill is, I think as you're probably aware, is sometimes there's fill available, sometimes there isn't. It can be very expensive. There are projects in the area now that may have fill available, so if we only clear a portion of the site first, then if fill becomes available, Bill won't have a spot to put the fill. So we're still kind of kicking that around, exactly how that's gonna work out, because we know one of the Concom concerns is making sure that we handle stormwater management through each phase of the project. Right now, we're looking at building the two constructed wetlands first to handle stormwater management during construction and obviously the final. However, to get those constructed, we need fill on the site too, so it's kind of a balancing act. We're trying to figure out how exactly the best way to have that work is. The self-storage facility itself does not generate very much traffic. We do have, and I think I just delivered, I put them in Martha's office actually, we have revised plans, different than, slightly different than what you have, because we received comments from the review engineer, Joe Sawaka, last week, and we've worked through those. We believe we've addressed all of his concerns. I have with me a letter, which I'll pass out for everybody, which is our responses to his comments. It lists his comments and then what our responses were. My opinion is there was nothing really significant here. He had a few questions on the stormwater management, which we think we've addressed, a couple of questions about lighting, and a couple other things about chain-link fence and things like that, so it's okay, I'll pass these out to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
So I know you had mentioned it earlier, that the, there's a Concom site walk next Tuesday at 3:00. And I spoke with Martha last night after the Concom meeting, and she had indicated obviously that you would like to do a site walk, so hopefully we can piggyback with the Concom. If not, we can make ourselves available whenever it's convenient for you guys to make it out there.
We normally do our site walks during the week, on the weekend, if it's convenient. I don't know about your schedule. You're the only one that's working.
Whatever works for you, we'll make, like I said, we'll make ourselves available.
So I don't know if it's gonna be depending on the schedule.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's fine. And I mean, sure, that's just a brief synopsis of the project, so sure of that, I guess I'll open it up to if you have any questions or concerns or comments. I don't know if you've had a chance to go through. I don't know if you've, if you saw Mr. Sawaka's comments prior to today or not.
Well, we did see Joe's comments, but this is the first we've seen of this, so obviously we'll need some time to digest this.
Absolutely.
Would it be helpful to have Eric go through the letter, kind of point by point?
I, what about you, John?
I don't think, I particularly want to have that happen. I think, I haven't read it yet, and I, I don't think fast enough to...
I understood, understood.
...respond to your comments. I know what Joe said, but I don't know what you're saying.
Sure. And we, and Joe hasn't seen those yet, so, you know, hopefully before the next meeting...
Oh, yeah, let's hope.
We'll be able to get a letter back from Joe that says he concurs with our responses.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that that's what we need, is, because we do rely on his opinion.
Absolutely.
So we will need to get something, let me just ask, this is yesterday. Joe has this?
I don't think he does have this.
No, I don't think so.
Oh, so, so he needs to digest this and get a response back to Martha.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And sometimes there's, you know, as you go through this, you know, new comments arise as you, you know, he thinks, you know, we answer one question, another question comes up, so.
So maybe what we'll be doing here is Joe will respond to this, and then if there are unresolved issues that are next meeting, we can go through them with you on a point by point basis.
Sure.
But let's assume that many of these things will be resolved.
We'd expect most of them.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And so, obviously, we're here, and Bill is here, and he has his expert here, so obviously any questions you have, we're certainly more than willing to try and answer.
Okay.
Can't guarantee I can answer everything, but I can try.
Okay.
Martha?
All right, so let me just open it up for the board to see, John?
Yeah, I got, I got a couple of issues. I sort of, Eric hinted at them last night, and I'm not entirely sure that I was expressing myself real well. I am concerned about opening up the entire site when the plan is to build only the first half.
Yep.
And I totally get why you're doing it. You got free fill, that's huge. Secondly, you don't want to put any money into something until you are sure that you have a market, and if you're losing money in the first pass, it's a pretty good bet you're not gonna build face two. So I totally get that. And I would like to explore some ways that we can cut the cost of what you've got there, what you're present design to help pay for, you know, not opening up quite as much. Erosion, that's kind of breaks most of the rules on erosion control. Rule number one, the first commandment is, don't open up more than you need.
Understood.
Couple of things come to mind, and I mentioned this, but I, again, I don't think I was clear. The catch basins are deep sump, I believe.
Yes, they are.
Unless you've changed them, they were four feet.
They're four-foot sump catch basins, yes.
Four feet with a hood.
Yes.
Now, you've got a sediment for bay, which by itself, does that take care of the cleanup or the pre-treatment?
No, no, you need the four-foot sumps also.
You need all of the four-foot sumps?
Yes. I checked that today with my engineer after you had mentioned that last night, so.
All right, so you gotta, you gotta have those. I would call to your attention that I don't believe you're allowed to get, take that 25% if they're in line. If they're offline, yeah.
Yeah, sure.
But in-line ones, I don't think, and to make that happen, you'd need to have an awful lot of rather useless drainage manholes.
Right, we'll...
Big expense to avoid that. What I was gonna suggest, if there's any way you can turn, make that not happen, you've got, it's a ledgey lot, and I can't believe you're not gonna run into ledge for some of those. And a four-foot is more expensive than a two-foot, obviously. You're liable to get into water, da-da-da-da-da.
I agree with you, absolutely. I agree with you, absolutely.
So, I mean, that's something that I, I just barely started talking to Joe about it, but I'd like to pursue that a little bit.
Yeah, we'll look, we'll look into that.
The other thing.
Did you clarify what you, what do you want them to pursue?
What I'd like to do, what I'm looking for is ways to save them money so that, because what I don't want to see happen, if I can help it, is to have that entire site cleared and scrubbed.
I don't think anybody does, yes.
You understand?
Yes, that was going to be, absolutely, yes.
And I understand their position is they're getting free fill from, I believe, the Whittier Bridge project?
Well.
From somewhere.
Yes.
Yeah, getting free, free fill from somewhere, and that's a big deal. And that isn't going to last forever. So they, they want to get all the fill in place they can. I, I do get that. And I can understand also why they want to phase it and not build it all at once. That makes all the good business sense in the world. So, you know, being a little hard on them on that, and this is a project, obviously, we're trying to encourage this kind of commercial development in this general area. I kind of like to see if there's some ways we can help you save a buck to compensate for, for that. I mean, that's just fair.
Well, why couldn't there be somewhere where you do the first phase? And then you just clear an area for fill storage, but not clear that site back site?
And that, that may have, that may be a reasonable solution.
Because right here, it says right in our site plan criteria that we want to minimize any type of erosion. And by clearing your site, I mean, you're stripping the site.
No, absolutely, absolutely. That's why we're talking about it, because we would like to get, I mean, we talked about with the Concom last night. We want to get everybody's input because, you know, the, the fact of the matter is that it needs a lot of fill. And Bill needs to have space available if the fill becomes available to put it. And it doesn't necessarily need to be the whole, the whole part of the site.
And the board understands the costs associated with this. We understand the phase. We also have issues, though. I also have an issue about, I understand they're going to be bringing in fill and storing it. But I don't want to see another issue like we dealt with on the other side of Sled Road. Where we have this random stockpiles of rocks and debris, and I don't know how we want to handle this. But we had an issue with another applicant on, on that same road, who was bringing in stuff and just stockpiling it. I don't, saying you're going to do the same thing, but we're going to have a little bit. I would hope the board would have stricter criteria into how that's going to be handled.
Yeah, there are different kinds of businesses, but it's well, well, well-stated.
Yeah, and we're not, we're here, obviously, to get your input and to work with you and come up with something that works for both you and us.
Everybody is when they're here right now. It's when you leave is when it changes.
Not if it's on the plans and in the, in the approval.
Unfortunately, one of the things that would help is if you get the fill into the halfway mark and then stockpile whatever you could in the back of that front part. But, you know, that's, that would save you something. You have to redistribute it, but that's probably small compared with buying it.
Right, and Bill and I will get together and figure out a, a plan, and we'll, we'll present something to you that, you know, isn't the whole thing, but something that we think, you know, we, we hear you. We hear you.
The other thing that, that could help, you've got a lot of mix on this job. There's a lot of pavement. I believe you carried a four-inch pavement, because that's what the subdivision rules and regulations state. Well, the reason for that four-inch, and I'm going to ask the planning board how they feel about that. The reason for that four-inch was the, was for roads. And that was the wishes of the Department of Public Works, which we were honoring and have been for a number of years. Personally, I don't think you need four inches in a place that's never going to see anything bigger than a, hopefully, a fire truck, never. But you'll see the odd, the odd truck occasionally. I don't think you need four inches. You may, as a.
I, I agree with you. I agree with you.
Only your call. I'm not trying to redesign it on you. But I'm saying that I would certainly ask the planning board to relax that back to three inches, which is, God knows, more than enough.
Most everywhere we design roads, most cities and towns around here, we do three inches.
Of course you do.
And three inches is, is more than adequate. And we went four because that's.
Yeah, four is, is the town standard, and I'm not, I'm not arguing with Tim. It's his, it's his football. But it, this, that last inch is, is a few bucks.
I'm more than comfortable with three inches, because like you said, the, the biggest truck on this site is going to be a twenty-two or twenty-four-foot box truck, which doesn't weigh a lot.
You mean like a, is that like a big U-Haul? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, like a big haul, U-Haul trucks, yes.
Four inches is appropriate if you get one semi. You've got ten semis per fifteen-minute period.
Sure.
But not for a job like this. I totally agree. So I'd just like to get that dia. Is the board, I would ask the board, are they happy with cutting it back to three inches?
Yes.
Hello?
Everybody else?
I don't know why it was four. Actually, I don't know. Why was it four in the first place?
I believe they were looking at town standards in general. I don't think the sub, the site plan review says anything about it.
Correct.
Subdivision rules, and they're trying to do the right thing. The subdivision rules and regulations call for four. I, when we were redoing them, I raised that issue myself. And the feedback I got from DPW was, we'd like four. We want to keep four. Fine.
But this isn't a subdivision. This is, this isn't a road, though, right?
I agree exactly, Kathleen. That's exactly what I'm saying.
Is the design criteria the same?
Doesn't need to be four.
I guess I'm trying to figure out, are they right now? Are we requiring them to have four?
That, well, the only thing they have to go on is the subdivision.
That's all they have to guide them.
Strictly speaking, I don't think there is a requirement. You could take easily, I'm not telling you how to, how to manipulate the planning board. But you could take the argument that it doesn't say in the site plan review that it's got to be four, so it doesn't. And I've just said it for you.
No, and, and I don't disagree with you, but, you know, we, we thought that was an appropriate number based on.
I can see why you did.
We didn't want to come in here and argue with you about everything.
We did not want to get into a fight over something this relatively small. I understand that.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
But if you're willing to go to three, I'm certainly, from an engineering standpoint, I'm certainly more than willing to stamp it. I have no issues with a three-foot thick asphalt.
Everybody would pretty much agree with that. Three is plenty.
Do you have other questions, John?
No, that's it.
Going down the line? Anybody else want to bring anything up? Kathleen?
Is it, I do have questions. Are you having any of those trailers that we were talking about before?
No, we're not.
All right. So are you, do you have desire in the future to have them? If we had something in the site plan review restricting them, would that harm you?
Well, the answer is, the answer is no. We want this to be a first-class self-storage facility.
And you know why I'm asking, right? Because of the expo issue we had down in Byfield. Remember the storage trailers that we had all along the site?
And you're talking like pods?
Yeah, the storage pods.
Your architect has given us some pretty, and, and I think it's a fine-looking building for your office in the front. And I think it'd be a great benefit for the town. But we don't really have any sense for the eight others or the seven others and what they're going to look like. Do you have any cuts on those that you could just submit to us about what the storage things themselves look like?
There's a, that's the front one, that's the front one.
Yeah, no, that.
For those that haven't seen it, I guess.
So they're going to look more like.
Just get a cut, just from, whatever you're going to buy it from, get us a cut, okay?
But it'd be your standard thirty or forty foot wide by a little storage.
And, and then I assume that, that the concrete comes right up to the base of those structures? Is that right?
Yeah.
Concrete?
Asphalt?
Yeah, asphalt. Yeah, no, the asphalt. Whatever that, what is it, a hundred and forty thousand square feet of stuff that you're putting in there? I mean, that is a lot. I mean, I was, you had a hundred and eighty-one thousand square feet of pervious surface between the, between the roofs and the asphalt. That's, that's all, that was a two big constructed wetlands that you got to build.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
I was going to ask Martha, for the meeting on the twenty-seventh at three o'clock, is the meeting point here? Is it on, or is it on the site?
It's on the site at, at Sled Road.
Is that your walkthrough you're talking about?
That's the Concom's walkthrough.
That's the Concom's walkthrough.
But that's not the board's walkthrough?
No, the, the board could, could choose to do that.
They have, you have to, you have to vote on when you're going to have the site walkthrough for the board, this board.
Okay, I was going to go with the Concom, but.
I don't know if they allow that. Do they allow that?
Well, we did it, we did.
What, what do you mean allow?
We did it with Chrissy.
No, so sometimes you have to get permission. We've had this before.
Well, I don't think that's an issue. I, I can't speak for Doug, but.
We, we haven't had ability just to have anybody come through our walkthroughs before.
Well, we did it with Chrissy.
Yeah, we, we've tried to coordinate them as much as possible.
We coordinated him, yeah.
So if we've had permission issues.
And we did it with Barago.
But you have to, it has to be known. You can't just show up. It's almost.
Right, 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 right.
No, it'd be scheduled.
It'd be scheduled, and everybody knew that it was planning board and, and, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so we may choose to do it. Yes.
Yeah. If you don't clear the back area, but clear site and part of the area to hold fill, and you wind up not needing the fill, do you spread it around, or do you haul it out of there?
Well, if it's, there's no intention to bring in more fill than he needs.
Right.
So if it's excess fill, then it would be trucked off-site.
Okay.
But typically, in situations like this, they have trouble getting enough fill. So once we thought there was enough fill on-site, he would start bringing fill in.
Okay, but would that otherwise cleared area to hold fill, if you take it out of there, would that be re-vegetated?
Um, no, it would be part of this area in here that's already going to be constructed.
Okay, but assume you don't construct back there.
Oh, oh, if for some reason he never did Phase Two, or, yeah, it would have to be re-vegetated.
Yeah, I think we'd want something other than weeds.
Yes, yes.
Anybody else?
I have some comments.
I have a couple. Let me just go, and then you do, you finish up.
Okay.
Okay? The, the site plan shows this fence, and then it also shows a constructed, I forget what it is.
A structure wetland?
Yeah, I don't have it with me. The retaining wall.
Yes.
How high is that retaining wall?
The walls are varying in heights, but I think the tallest one is roughly eight feet, maybe nine feet high.
And those are mostly on the sides? They're not in the front?
Correct. That's correct.
And the purpose of them is to hold in the fill that you're bringing in?
Yes, yes.
And the purpose of the, of the fence is to keep people out?
Yes.
Okay. And is the fence material black plastic, or is it chain-link?
It's.
Chain-link, black plastic?
It's chain-link right now. I don't recall whether we specified black, you know, black coating on it. But certainly, if that's what you prefer, we can, we can do that. If we haven't, I honestly don't remember.
Okay.
Now, what do you have on top of the retaining wall? I don't remember. You've got something to keep people from falling down?
There's a guardrail. There's a guardrail in front of it.
For a vehicular guardrail?
Yes, yes.
You don't need anything for.
Well, the chain-link fence is in behind the guardrail to keep people.
The chain-link fence is going to take care of the people, all right.
So on the northern part of the site, you're not showing any new landscaping, but it's showing as green. So what occurs there on the, that, well, no, but then, going around the property? From there, yeah, oh, that, what is that?
That is basically a buffer to, to the wetlands. It's either slope or the retaining walls are in here. But this is, the, this is showing.
So is it grass?
Yes. The area that can be grassed.
Planted, planted grass?
The area that can be grassed will be grassed.
Okay.
But there's retaining walls in there, too.
Then you have all sorts of material that you're planting with the constructed wetlands?
Yes.
That I, I assume, I didn't do a double check, but they fit with constructed wetlands.
Yes.
There's blueberry bushes and rosemary and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And the planting in the front, I think, is very good. I, I think that it'll give you a nice sense. And the sign looks good.
I take no credit for, for that. The sign was Bill's.
Yeah. I'm talking about the size. I'm not sure about the lettering yet. But I, I thought that was just a keeper that you, that you threw in. Okay. So any other comments from you guys?
Wasn't one of Joe's comments that the chain-link fence should be on top of the retaining wall?
Yeah, and so I'd like, we have to read that, read through this and see what, what you say.
Yeah, and, and there, there was an area or a couple of areas where we showed, showed the chain-link fence. It came basically in front of the wall, then across the wall, which quite honestly didn't make any sense. It was just a drafting error with the guy drawing the plans. And Joe pointed out, so we keep the fence in front of the wall throughout. Yes. Well, I believe he is. I believe he is, yes. We just got him the, you know, he hasn't gotten the comment, so hopefully, we'll hear from him later this week.
Martha?
A few things. The comments from the fire department are pending, so I should be getting those. I haven't gotten anything from Mike Riley, but I know that when we met with him, the police chief, he was very happy with the, the entry on Route One. I'll see if he has any further comments. I did get a, a letter from the historical commission. They've determined that there was no historical significance to the site. However, they're making the following recommendation, that the applicant preserve the stone wall, which marks this lead road boundary. Board of Health had no comments, other than they will need to review the septic system. And we received one comment from Anna Butter, who was directly across the street, I believe, David McDonald. And it's short, so I'll read it. "Bill DiFrancesco recently approached me with a site plan and renderings detailing the proposed self-storage facility across from my home on Route One. I am writing this letter to express my support of the proposed development of the self-storage facility. If the planning board would like to discuss this with me, I can be reached it." So.
It's refreshing.
That is good.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thought you were going to say the guy across the street was Richard Capalupo.
So I think that the, the, the issues that we have in front of us now is that we need Joe's response to your responses. We need to figure out the best way to do a, a site walk. And then schedule to carry this forward to an appropriate time when we have people here to review it. So let's talk about the, you're going on the twenty-seventh.
Yep.
I'm away, but I'm away for two weeks, so I, I wouldn't tie things to me. That if the board wants to dovetail with the.
You can, forgetting that there are some people that work on the board.
Let me just, let me just, hold on. I'm not forgetting.
Okay.
Who would like to do, dovetail with the Concom, I think that that's fine to do. But if we need to schedule something else for those who work, that maybe you could accommodate something on a Saturday or something like that?
Absolutely.
So what is the, what would you all like to do? And let's see if we can do, who, who would like to go with the Concom next week?
We could certainly go, but we're the only ones that are going to go. I mean, we're flexible.
Okay, George, what's, what's your?
The twenty-seventh, it would be?
Yeah.
Yeah, it should be.
Okay, so we have two who want to do, three will go with the Concom.
And I could go with the Concom.
And you'll go with them.
I don't care. I'll go with anybody.
And, and we're going to need a special one for, for Elizabeth on a Saturday. And I won't go. I'll just have to, because I, I mean, I can't ask them to do three.
Well, when are you back? And when?
The ninth.
So maybe we should talk about continuation and then work backwards.
Which is unfortunately a, so let's talk about continuation. I, I will miss the February fourth meeting. And Kathleen will not be here as well. So our question is, do we want to have a meeting on February fourth?
Yeah. We will have a quorum.
We'll have a quorum.
We, do we have anything? February fourth, we're not going to be under any pressure to be approving this, because you're still going to be.
At the Concom.
Fighting a good fight with the Concom until well into February. So we, our, our meeting, our second meeting will still be either right at the time of the Concom or before it.
It would be right after.
Right after the Concom.
The day after.
Martha?
The day after, okay.
Is the associate member allowed to vote, since we need a filling?
You want to do it on the fourteenth?
Well, we don't need a supermajority for this. We only need to have three planning board members.
So it doesn't make a difference, okay.
The associate member is really specifically only for special permits.
Okay.
So we have just looked at this, and if we could do one for Elizabeth and myself on the fourteenth of February, that would be, if we do our meeting on the eighteenth, that would, that would fit. And we can do a, and we have all the information from all the other walkthroughs that could help us with that.
What day are you going?
Martha, you'll let us know the time of the site walk?
For the one on the fourteenth?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh is three.
Three o'clock.
Three o'clock, thank you.
And that'll be on-site?
On-site.
At Sled Road?
And on the fourteenth, whatever works for you in the morning, probably.
The fourteenth is a Saturday, right?
It's a Saturday.
There you go. What, do you want to, what time do you want to do? Do you want to do nine o'clock? Does that work?
Ten o'clock on Saturday morning?
Ten o'clock?
Okay.
Ten o'clock, Rashad?
Yeah, yeah.
On the fourteenth.
Yeah.
Okay. Valentine's Day. Okay.
All right.
Okay, any? Okay, um, any, um, any other comments from anyone on this? We're moving forward, and we have work to do.
You might be thinking of other things that, the only reason you did him is because you perceived the town wanted you to do them, and maybe we don't.
I've got, I've got one thing I'll bring up that Bill and I have talked about, and it's because of the amount of rock we think he's going to run into.
Yeah.
Is these retaining walls, he's asked me if we could explore building the retaining walls out of rock, you know, rather than a, a pre-bought, you know, shade product.
Sure.
I personally have no problem with it. I do run into resistance sometimes from planning boards.
I've, I've had to design those, there's no big deal about it.
Right.
You know, there's a gravity wall, so it's got to be rather massive at the bottom and go like that.
Right.
It's a lot of rock, but if you've got a lot of rock to spare, it's prob, and you, you know, the nice thing about that is you don't have to worry about frost cover.
Right.
You've got to waste it four feet of wall because of frost, if you're concrete.
That, that should help you out too, a little bit?
Yeah, it would, it would help reduce his site cost.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I, I would suggest if, if you're okay with that, then we would put notes on the plan that say, you know, wall to be, you know, this or, or that.
We'd like to look at the wall for review, just for the, for giggles, but, you know, want to see what you're going to build in lieu of, but, you know.
I'm sorry? We want to see if we can reclaim some of those stone on the property.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's fine.
Yeah, as long as it's not a stone wall. I, I'm, I'm okay, is the rest of the planning board okay with that?
No, no, well, I am, anybody else feel strongly?
No, I think it'll look better.
I think it'll look better.
Yeah, it'll look much better.
Who would be doing the engineering of the wall, would you do it, or would you have...
Yes.
Okay.
We, basically, what, what I would do is I will detail, the Mass DOT has a standard spec for gravity, stone wall, we'll, we'll just use their spec.
Do we have any other comments from any board member?
I wish you will.
We have one person from the public, would you like to make a comment? Do I need a motion to continue?
Yes.
Could I have it?
I'll make a motion to continue.
Oh, it's second?
A time and date certain.
To, to a time and date certain, to the date of...
February 18th?
February 18th at 7:15? Oh, wait a minute.
We have, we have, um...
We have across the street?
Yes.
What time are they?
7:15.
So, let's make this 8:30, 8:15?
Yeah, let's say 8:15, because it can start later, it just can't start earlier.
Okay, alright, so we have two public hearings that night, both...
We're not meeting on the 4th?
Well, well, oh, I guess we, we didn't vote that yet. We didn't vote, but we're not doing the site walk until the 14th.
Right.
So...
Well, no, I'm just, I just want to know whether to show up here on the 4th.
Well, let's take that first, do, can, want to have a discussion about the worthwhileness of meeting on the 4th, or can we skip it?
We have a motion on the table for continuing, maybe we should...
Yeah, you got to finish that first.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Any discussion on the continuation, now that we have the, we have a time and a date? It is the February 18th at 8:15. Any other comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Jim is not going to be able to make it on that date, so if anyone has any questions regarding the operation of self-storage, maybe that would be a good time to ask.
Or can we have your card?
Sure. Yeah, you can shoot me an email or call me.
Okay.
Were you thinking more traffic questions, or what kind of questions?
Well, I did have a, I did have a traffic question. No, what, the question I had is, the report indicates five traffic, volume of traffic, five per day. What's the basis of that?
That, I could, I guess, I probably answered it better, sort of answered it than him. That's from the Transportation Engineers Handbook, which is how you calculate all projected traffic on all developments.
And so, is that based on the square footage of your facility, or the number of storage units?
There's several ways it can be calculated, I'd have to look and see, in this particular case, I don't know which way we calculated it.
So, prodding myself on, what is the total number of storage units that will be in these eight structures?
Depending on the product mix, which we're still working on, it could be a little over 200.
I have no way of guessing what kind of traffic that generates.
No, that's what this book, that's what this book does, I'll, I'll, I will...
Can you let me know whether it's by unit or by square footage?
Yeah, I believe it's by square footage, only because, until you asked the question, I've, I've never had a conversation with Bill about how many units are going to be on here, as I've known of square footage. But I do have the excerpts from that book, I can get to everybody, there's, there's 15 or 20 pages of various ways they calculate it, based on, you know, square footage, number of units. And, and what they do is they, for every type of business, is they have this book, and it's, they take actual case studies from other, say, California, when somebody built one, they actually counted the traffic, and they give you curves, plots on, you know, maximum, minimum, average. So, I'll get you all that information, and I'll, I'll get that to Martha in the next day or so.
There is some, there's some industry data available, but, you know, every facility is a little bit different in size, and so it makes a difference. But I can tell you that if you had five visits a day is not inconceivable, it's on the low end. But I, I was just down on a property in Boston, for example, today, and we have 300 of a thousand units rented, and if there were five visitors today in total, it was, it was kind of a quiet day, so it's not, it, it's possible, I think you're probably, a good average day looking, probably more like 20 visits, or something like that. And on a busy weekend, you might have 25 or 30. I mean, even if you had 50, that would be a lot, I mean, people don't come to use their, their storage unit every day. A lot of people moving tend to put it in and come out at the end.
Come and bow before it, you know what I mean?
And people who use storage as an extension of their home tend to come in the city maybe daily, but out here, I would suspect maybe once or twice a week, or something at the most.
I've had a unit over at U-Haul for about 10 years, and a busy year for me is four visits.
I was going to say.
You know, I just don't go there very often, I...
What about vendor, I know there are vendors who may be using these storage units for their product, what about, do they tend to come in more?
Yeah, so some vendors tend to come in every day, multiple times per day, contractors, for example, delivery guys, for example. Other, uh, commercial users tend to come in less frequently, less frequently, but definitely not as expensive, as opposed to someone who's using storage just, you know, to facilitate a move. But I think you'll find in general, and I don't know, to be honest, I took the situation with the neighbor across the street, but if I was a neighbor, knowing what I know, I would welcome a self-storage facility relative to a lot of other uses, because self-storage is historically very low traffic generated.
I would, I would expect it.
Yeah, and you were absolutely correct about the trucks. You'll see a few semis, um, I mean, if you had one a month, that would probably be more than average, but you're not going to see a ton of big, big trucks. It's going to be people in their cars, people in their SUVs for the most part, and people in rental trucks, you know, 14-foot, 20-foot trucks, you know, 10-foot trucks.
Are you going to be, you're going to be renting trucks there, like U-Haul does?
Yeah, that's something we're considering, yes.
You're looking at that, I...
John, if he's not going to be here, would it be an idea to get a, um, operations and management letter at this point, or is that going to be necessary?
No, it's necessary, and so the question is, when you would submit it? Like an O and M, how are you going to manage the property? Maybe start working, if we're not going to meet for a month?
Yeah, absolutely.
By the next time.
Thanks.
And if we can get it earlier, then I can distribute it to the board members.
Good.
The neighbors will be interested in that, just so you know.
Yeah. Well, um, so we voted to continue, do we need to do anything else? No?
No, I think that's it.
No, we don't close it, we, it's continued, so we stay open, but I think that unless anyone else has any questions of these guys, I think we're done for this, then we can talk about September, or February 4th separately, okay?
If you think of anything else, Eric, why don't you let Martha know? Anything else you'd like to see waived, or...
Okay.
Yeah, we'll take a look at it, thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much, and...
Here's some, some of Jim's cards.
Okay, good.
And also, this is just the development team, and who we are, and my, um, my experience.
Okay. Good, thank you very much, thanks. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. One suggestion in terms of collecting additional comments, is if Joe could maybe do his comments in line to this somehow? So, I don't know if maybe we could get a soft copy of this.
Did you take one, please?
I mean, a word. Exactly.
Yeah, I'll see if it's maybe easier to work with.
Yeah. Nice paper.
Yeah.
Nice heavy stock.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we were on, we did Caldwell, and we did Woodbridge, and then let's go back to old business on the master plan. That make sense for everybody? Yeah. Let's, uh... Did everybody get what Martha sent out on the master plan, the changes that were made, or did you make copies for everybody?
I made copies.
Oh, good. Thanks. Yeah, I thought it was my printer, no, it's the way it came out.
It's because I had made that comment in the margin.
Yeah, the comment, it just screws everything else off. Yeah, it really does.
I don't want it.
No, yeah, that's right, Kathleen, you have to take it. So, let me see if... Let me, let me just give you a, 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 a hand to walk your way as you read through this, or, I, I can't expect everybody to read through this, can we? Tonight? No. But let me just point out what, what we've done. Martha has pointed out this question here, do we want to include any background information on community character? We use FoxPro as the model for, for this. They had a long section on community character, I, I don't know it, we tell them they can read the master plan, which has all the community character in it, so I, I'm not sure about it, does anybody feel strongly about having a section on that?
I, I think it's a good idea to point out things.
Just like a quick synopsis of what the town...
Within reason, the more you can tell them, the better proposal you're likely to have. Not all of these things you're saying are going to be necessarily pointed out to them verbally as they check out the town.
Can I leave that with you, Martha? And you take it from any document that we've got, you know? We received comments from John and, and Richard on a number of things, and most of their concerns have been addressed some way or another, with John's incorporating some of the comments, and I got back to Richard on some of his concerns. But if we turn to page two, and we get down to number five, visioning and goal setting. The second paragraph talks about, "The 2006 plan included an implementation plan which listed 107 recommendations. Of those, 24 have been completed, and another 34 are being worked on in one way or another. The plan with its 107 recommendations has been analyzed by the planning board, but now must be looked at by the community as a whole to determine which of the existing recommendations should be carried forward. What new recommendations should be added, and what recommendations may no longer be relevant. The board is interested in the consultant's opinion about when these implementation strategies should be reviewed." So, I read this through, because Richard's comment to me was that, well, maybe we should start with this. And I thought, well, maybe we should. One of the, I think Richard probably hadn't been aware that we, David and you, we all went through this as a staff, or as a board.
A year ago.
A year ago, came up with this document, and I think the concern is that we need to get, we get, we need to do some education with, with the committee, look at them on board about what, what we're all about, I think. So, I don't know, does anybody want to bring up some points, or do you want to refresh your thought on this, and...
Well, the general gist of it is that, unlike what you had before, you now have this 2006 master plan in back of you, and it's not that much time since the older one, nine, nine years. And they made specific recommendations, now, uh, some of them have worked out, some of them have not. And what you don't want to do is just get a rehash of things that are simply either for one reason or another deemed impractical or unworkable for any reason at all.
I don't think you're going to get that.
Well, we don't know.
I don't think you would, though, because the goals there, some of them are going to be eliminated, because, like Little River and all those. I, I don't think that's going to be an issue.
It, it, I'm not sure if it won't be on anything, I think that there's certainly some things that could be a problem, like that. And it's just a question of when we bring this, did you ever take, see the document we're, we're talking about?
The 2006?
No, the, the summary implementations that, that...
Probably not, that David put together.
That David and I and...
No, that I did not say, I didn't know that.
So, you need, would you get...
Yeah, I need to do it, I felt...
Let's get you a copy of that, and then we'll maybe have that, but we need to do it, and it's just a question of when we do it. And I, my instinct is, as was Martha's when we did, is that, let's get enough information out there, let's update the demographic profile, let's do new projections, let's do a new housing analysis, let's do a new land use, then let's start talking about these recommendations, and what's still dialed in and what's not.
In the context of what's happened.
Yeah, in the context of what's happened. So, okay, I think that makes sense. Now, the major new, new item here is, well, there's two things. You see this stuff in bold that starts at the bottom of page two, and talks about additional work items, which will be the responsibility of the town planner and master plan committee, are the following: historic resources, natural resources, and community facilities. The town planner will collaborate with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission on transportation issues. And we say, however, it will be the responsibility of the consultant to incorporate work done by the town planner, that is Martha, on the above items into the final report. So, that's something we had forgotten to put in before, and it's, you know, we just can't have Martha working on four or five items that somehow just are out there and never incorporated back in, and so we're saying it's the responsibility of the consultant to do that. It's the next item, which is the biggest one. Which is, we had net, we had nothing in the last document about the open space and recreation plan. And this is rather comprehensive. I was not part of this, nor do I have a lot of experience with open space and recreation plans, but Martha was. And so she has here a rather detailed, um, work program for this. When I saw this this morning, my only concern was, because we're now increasing the number of meetings to 12 for the plan, master plan process, and we're asking for six in the open space plan, and all of a sudden, you've got 18 meetings.
That's a lot.
That's a lot.
Yeah.
And, and so my...
It's nine months at best, you're not going to have one every week, it's going to be, at best, two weeks.
Yeah, and, and, and so I was just concerned about, A, whether or not we're biting off too much now? Should we separate these into two documents, one the master plan and one the recreation plan? Do two separate RFPs? Or keep it the way it is, and see what, see what the consultant community tells us? So, I... Everybody got what I think is the dilemma here?
Yeah, I, I get you completely, I, I was under the misapprehension that we had to have two separate groups, a separate committee, a separate consultant.
I think we do, I think we do, and we're asking one consultant now to take care of both.
That could be problematic.
I think it could, the more I, I read it, I said, I'm, I'm not that comfortable with it.
I'm a little nervous about that.
You just don't know if you're going to get somebody who's going to be as adept at the open space as they are at the master plan.
Yeah, because that would be a little, sort of a subset of the population of planners, I would think.
Right, the reason we put it in here is that when we went to town meeting, we said we were going to do an update of the master plan and an update of the open space plan. It didn't say it had to be done all at the same time, it just said we were going to do it.
One thing you want to be very careful about is that if you have two people working, that they're, the information, there's an exchange of information between, there has to be some coordination between the two of them.
Oh, yeah.
They don't make...
Do they have to be simultaneous, I mean, could they be consecutive, so that...
Yeah, I'm beginning, well, the point is, yes, they can be consecutive, Martha points out, though, that... Martha points out, though, that of the two documents, the one that, if we don't have one updated, it's the open space plan that could hurt us if we're going for state and federal funding, because you have to have one that's been approved.
Yeah, that's fair. It's actually much more stringent in that sense than the master plan. The master plan always is benefit to have a current one. And part of the thinking of, of doing these two, you know, basically in conjunction with each other is that there's certain, certain information, certain data sets that will overlap, population growth and trends and that kind of thing. And it doesn't make sense to have two separate people doing that as two separate exercises.
Yeah.
What, what do you think, Martha? I mean, do, do you think they should be, what's your feeling about it?
Well, I think, I'm not sure, I mean, I, I sort of went through this whole thought process as I was adding this to, to this last night. I am concerned about how it would work and whether it would end up being too cumbersome.
There's no reason why, the major thing is to not have a consultant redo demographic, housing, and land use information. And there's no reason why, since we'll own that information,
Right.
that we can't simply give that to an open space planner.
You just need to stagger the, the consultant periods, periods of work a little bit.
I must admit, in my mind, I'm getting confused. Do, do you know what I mean, about how we manage these two at the same time without stepping over each other?
Yeah.
Are there consultants with both skill sets?
Yes.
There are.
There are.
There are. Not that many, but, but by focusing on that, we might not get one of the better ones in each one of them. Because there are some who might be so adept at the master plan update, but really don't have a lot of open space skills.
Yeah.
And vice versa.
They tend to get the jack of all trades.
Yeah, which is sometimes okay, but maybe not.
Frequently not.
You know?
Well, can you put in, if you wanted to separate it, can't you just do a ta, a project schedule for each scope of work? And then have the tasks that overlap, make sure that you coordinate appropriately?
We thought we could do that. The other thing we were thinking of is having two separate submissions. One for the master plan and one for the open space, and price for the master plan and price for the open space. Is that too cumbersome?
The trouble is that if somebody gets them both, there's a lot of cost sharing there. From looking at it from the consultant's perspective, if he doesn't know he's gonna get them both, if he, you know, it is... It's hard to get the best of both worlds, that. He's gonna have to, the consultant is gonna have to price it as, oh, they're only gonna get one out of the two. So, if they get them both, if one guy gets them both, then he's hit a home run. And we, we're losing. We're spending money that we didn't have to spend.
Martha, is there any chance that if you had two, that they could come up with conflicting recommendations or recommendations that are really not in tune with one another? Is that possible? Is it reasonably possible?
Well, I think their recommendations really are supposed to be derived from the community input, so if they're listening, that shouldn't be too much of an issue.
They're not really supposed to be telling us what we have to do.
Right.
An engineering consultant tells you what you gotta do. Your doctor tells you what, what you gotta do if you don't want to die. But these guys are helping us to refine our own thing.
They're more facilitators, taking us through a public process and making sure that the public process is heard and incorporated.
What about your, um, planning, um, board, the web thing? Can you send something out to find out what other communities have done?
I could do that, I haven't done it yet.
Because there's, I mean, we can't be the first community to go through this. Do you know what she's, can you explain to the new members what that, what I'm referring to?
Yeah, there's a, there's a planner's listserv, I'm sure, you know, you deal with your own. And it's a great resource for lots of questions.
I would like to see if we could resolve this, though, and if the RFPs, however we decide, because I think what's written here is pretty solid. There might be just a couple of things here and there that might need to be adjusted. And I think it's just a question of how we proceed with sending them out, whether or not we send them as it is. I mean, when Martha and I talked about it today, I went from, oh, no, let's do the open space plan in September, to, well, why don't we just throw it all in the, and see, see what people come up with, and if they come up with creative stuff, all the power for us. If they don't come up with creative stuff, we're not obligated to go with them. So...
That's a lot of work for us to, a lot of chewing to be biting off.
Well, so, 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 so here's, Martha, when you prepared the, who, who is the open space committee?
Well, there aren't many of us left. Dan Streeter and I, and Mike Carbone.
That's it.
That's it.
Really?
No. Marlene resigned, David Powell's gone.
So, did you, did you prepare that list of, let's just take, did you remember what I sent you that email?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Did you make a copy of that?
I can make a copy of it.
Just make a copy.
Okay.
And let's take a look at it, because what, what we did was we talked about, well, who's gonna be on the master plan committee? And that, I think we can start to feel somewhat of comfort with, but I don't know who's on the open space committee.
Yeah, who it would be?
Yeah.
Oh.
Do you know?
I, I would say typically what they do is, is put out the word that we're looking for people to serve, and they come to us.
Right.
And then jointly, I would think the selectmen would want their two cents worth listened to. So jointly somehow we pick a committee of the people that have expressed an interest, trying to get a reasonable amount of diversity.
And then I think it's the town, Martha's responsibility to be the project manager of that as well, though.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, it really is. She's the, she's the project manager for the master plan and for the open space plan.
Sure.
That's a lot.
It is.
And also run this.
And you're trying to do them both at the same time.
Yeah, and run this at the same time.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying, I'm wondering if we're not biting out more, we could choose to do them together.
It doesn't feel good. Doesn't feel, I mean, if, if we had a staff, you know, more than, more than Martha. I call it, no.
But for the concern that it could impact funding, based on what everybody's saying, it sounds to me like it should be done consecutively. But, but recognizing that there is an issue there.
And it doesn't have to wait that long, I don't think. I think, I think once you get the master plan process up and going, and a lot of the initial work, which is probably gonna be substantial, out of the way. And then, but the issue is that Martha is responsible for a significant amount of that, of that work.
Yeah.
Because that's the way we, when we analyzed it, we figured that, well, we could do some of that work ourselves. Now, it may be that the board can pick up some of that slack.
I would think the committee could, certainly.
That's what I meant. Board slash committee. Oh, okay, so, so I'll read this, so... In going over this, we had a recommended plant, master plan committee. Planning board, five members. Selectmen, one, one or two, depending upon what Jeff wants. Finance committee, one person. Capital planning committee, one. Conservation member or agent, one. Town planner. Building commissioner, one, and then members of the public, four. That's 15 people.
Fifteen is about, about all you really wanna deal with.
About all you can take.
Citizens committees, I know I'm beating this to death, but it's like herding cats.
Right.
It really does take...
And if people are...
Skills and...
If people are committed, we could do it, but it's the role of the consultant to run those meetings.
I would question the number four for citizens. I think we need more, more citizens. And fewer town officials. You need to crank them in, but for God's sake, Sam doesn't have to go to these meetings all the time. There are some things that the group needs to go, hey, Sam, what do you think about this?
We've got...
You get his opinion, and back you go.
So, we've got, we've got... Finance committee is, is, is clear, because they're the ones who brought it to our attention that they wanted to do the study. Capital planning has indicated they absolutely want to be on the committee. So, it means that...
That's, that's a nice change from before.
Right.
Very nice change.
Conservation agent and, and building commissioner maybe are on, on call as needed?
I would say so. I'd, I'd say the same for the plan, the finance, personally. And I'm not sure all of the planning board members have to be members of this.
Well, that might be, that might be the way we do it. The, the finance committee is gonna need one person.
You think so?
Yeah, and only because Frank and Marshall have made a point of that they really...
They really want to be in on it.
Really, really want to be in on it.
Okay.
And I, and I welcome that. I think that's terrific.
Oh, no, it's a good thing. It's just I'm looking for people to be consulted.
So, if you take out conservation agent and capo, that then can boost this up to six.
To six, and that's getting...
That's, that's good.
See, the thing is, from the public, it seems to me you need a certain amount of diversity. If you're gonna have a young person, you gotta have an old person. If you're gonna have somebody that just got to town, you gotta have somebody that's a member of the sons and daughters, you know? You need a mix. You need people from Blackfield, Plum Island.
But I don't want to get much more above 15, because...
I agree with that, yeah.
All right. Any comments from folks on what we just talked about down here?
The only thing I would ask, John, is if a consultant puts in a bid for both, or a portion of the open plan and also for the, separately for the master plan. If the consultant wins both, can we ask him to give a different price in his quotes, a combined price?
You're gonna get a different what?
Price.
Quote, a different price instead of a price for A and a price for B.
And a price for both of them.
And say, put in price for the combination.
Sure you can, sure you can.
Okay.
That is about, by far, that's a very good point. But are we gonna do this? We were heading towards, we were talking ourselves into doing this simultaneously may not be a real great idea.
Well, we have a lot of different opinions.
Maybe what we could do is, how soon can we get some input from your website there, the planning website?
I, if people are gonna, if people are gonna respond to a question, and they don't always, but if they are, it's usually within a day or two.
We can wait that long, get some input from you on that. Depending, if you, you know, if you feel that's appropriate.
No, it's certainly worth a question. I haven't had a chance to talk to Tracy yet either.
Well, let's try to do that. Right now, we have, I think, two options. One is we keep it as it is and go forward and see what happens. Option two is it's sequential. And we do the master plan first, and we do the open space plan in 10 months.
This is not a suggestion, but a question. How soon, you mentioned that one of them is gonna be required by the state.
I don't know the answer to that. Do you know?
Well, our open space plan was conditionally approved by the state five years ago, based on a five-year action plan. So, basically, its time is, is up, and it's time to start doing it.
At the same time, in answer to my question, well, what, what funds did we go after in the past five years? The answer was none. So...
That doesn't mean it's not gonna change, though.
Right, and it also doesn't mean that if you're diligently working on it, it doesn't mean that you're in trouble.
Okay, all right. So, there's no hard firm date?
No.
September 3rd, 2000?
No, no.
It's not that way, all right.
So, can I leave it that, Martha, you'll, you'll try to figure it out if we can get some information before Friday?
Yep.
We can have that conversation, get some information out to the board members and say, well, based on all this information, this is what we're gonna do. Okay? Right?
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
No, what are you thinking about something?
No, I was just wondering whether, whether for, for this alone, it would be worth having a February 4th meeting. I know you won't be here, but...
So, let's, let's, let's talk about that. Who will be here February 4th? It will be you four.
I'll be here.
Martha, would it be, I don't know, I like the idea...
I think that's fine.
I was gonna say, I like the idea of having you here, but would it be an idea if you were to just circulate what your feelings were, even though John was not here, and if you wanted to call a meeting at that point in time, because you felt comfortable with it, without John being here, we could do that?
I mean, I'll, I'll be in email access. So... You know?
Is there anything we need to vote on, I guess, is the question?
John, I'm asking a question. Sometimes at our meetings, I've seen where they have these, you can have your computer, and actually you can be here and serve as a, as a member of the meeting.
Yeah, Russo used to do that.
Okay, would that be an option? I, I have no idea why you're gonna be away, and if you don't want to do that, that's fine. But that is a possibility to be arranged if we have the IT support for it.
Is there a need, though?
Well, if he's not gonna be here, yeah.
It's all right. You can do it. Well, Martha and I will be in touch, and, and if it's uncomfortable for me, I'll let you all know, but I have a feeling it's gonna be fine. Because I'm fine going either way. I mean, after everyone has digested it and thought it through, and Tracy has been, has been contacted, I can just as easily move forward quickly with both, and I can just as easily say, no, that's not the right way to go. So, I can, I can see both sides. I just want to get the master plan out there. That's my problem.
Do we, John, do you have any contracts in APA that could get us a, or are you a member of the APA that can get us a standard contract where you fill in the blanks?
Oh, we can get that.
Yeah, I'm a member.
Are you an APA member?
Right, right.
Do they have contracts for different kinds of planning services?
Um, I honestly don't know. I haven't, haven't looked at that.
They probably do. AIA has, has a number of different situations for which they've got standard documents that you can just play games with.
Right, right.
No, APAs has them. APA has them. They do.
Good.
So, okay, do we need to, anything further on that? We don't need to vote on that. It was a good discussion. Am I right?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Everybody okay?
Yep.
Any other comments from anyone? No, okay. So, actually, maybe one thing, Martha, that you and I can work on before I leave is this committee group. And let's get that in front of Tracy and make sure she's okay with it, okay? Because if, in fact, we have the conservation agent and the building commissioner as needed, we need to have Tracy say, you need to be there.
Oh, yeah, sure.
You know what I mean?
Well, I think both of those are, you know, we're talking fairly responsible people.
Yeah, but even so...
They have to be there, they'll be there.
Yeah, okay. All right, that's the master plan.
And anybody else you can think of?
Yeah.
You know, the other...
By the way, do you have...
Does the whole, does the whole planning board have to be involved in this? Would we, would we do a subdivision?
I...
It would open up a few more, a few more slots.
Maybe we should wait till we have...
What's that?
Maybe we should wait to have a full board before we...
Well, there's something to that point.
Before we think about letting this one on and go.
Actually, one of my reasons for having the entire board was that there were so many new number, members. It would be very important for those members to be part of this.
Be part of it, yeah. That is a very good point. And we've got reasonable amount of diversity, too, now.
Yeah.
And also, under Mass General Law, the planning board is responsible for the master plan, so, you know, it sort of makes sense to have...
You really can't just have a subdivision.
Yeah, well, you could, you can't just have one or two, though.
No.
You just can't. Okay. All right, the zoning amendments for the town meeting? Schedule.
A few things to hand out here. One is the amended schedule.
I'm sorry.
Based on the decision last time not to, well, to put off any, any...
Thanks.
Voting on recommendations to the selectmen until the 18th. And the other thing, um, this is from Sam in response to the meeting with the ZBA that we had.
Oh, good.
This is from Sam.
From Sam. And, um... It touches on some of the, some of the hot buttons that he and the ZBA were dealing with, including hung basement. And he's put together a definition which he feels comfortable with, that would keep it out of being included in floor area ratio.
So, in order for us to vote on this issue, can we vote on it? And if, well, there might be a reason to have a meeting on the 4th. Because this will not have been reviewed, except for on the 18th, when we have to send the recommendation into the board of selectmen that we are referring it.
Right, I mean, we don't have to have the language... Right, I mean, we don't have to have the language down. We just need to be able to itemize the, the things.
Really?
We would have, have to have the language down by the time the public hearing is advertised.
So, so can we retract it if we're all of a sudden uncomfortable with the language?
And what I, um, yeah, I mean, I think what would make sense now would be maybe for the board to take these, review it, see if everybody's comfortable with it.
I think so too.
And then, yeah, we could talk about it on the board.
Because it was really almost two months ago that we did this, and I think it's going to be a lot of, you know, re, conditioning ourselves to understanding what we're talking about here.
So maybe we could, what we could aim for on the fourth would be to discuss these and also a revised accessory apartment by law.
So will you have the revised bylaw by the fourth?
I have to.
You have to. And then this. So I think that the answer is that, I think the board should meet on the fourth. Okay.
The black is your comment.
Uh, no, the black is.
Black Sam?
Uh, it's all Sam.
So George, that'll be an interesting thing for you, George, that we think the board is going to have to meet on the fourth.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. But if you can, you'll be sending me stuff?
Yes.
By email? Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so any comments you have, you can pass back to me.
Martha, will you incorporate what Sam said before we review, or should we be reviewing this?
Um, I would review this for the fourth, and then I'll put together the accessory apartment by law.
For the fourth, though?
For the fourth.
So there'll be, so, but isn't this going to be incorporated into the accessory?
That's my question.
Um, no, these are, these are separate. Most of these are definitions that he wanted to.
Oh, hung basement, of course, has nothing to do with accessory. This is, this is Block Island.
Plum Island.
You must be going to Block Island.
Slipped, slipped.
Don't tell us where you're going.
Not going to Block Island.
So these are all definitions that he is recommending, either new definitions or changed definitions.
Okay, great.
Has nothing to do with accessory apartments.
Right, that's right.
On the one at the end, maximum building height, we kind of left that one hanging. We were going to look at the past article that, that was proposed for town meeting.
Okay.
And that will be the most problematic problem. So I will pull that out too.
When it says past article, what?
It was an article that we had on the warrant.
Oh, that wasn't, wasn't passed?
That's about twenty years ago, right?
Yeah, I think it was, I can't remember, was it withdrawn or was it voted down? Do you remember?
I don't remember. It was very controversial.
Extremely controversial, and it might be something.
I think that would have been a lot less controversial if we'd stuck with the mid-type. We, we, we dropped everything a significant amount from a practical sense.
And we didn't compensate for it, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, we didn't compensate for it.
We, we, you know, I think the principle was sound if we just changed that. I mean, it's a big tweak, but if we tweaked that, it may not be quite as offensive.
Okay. So are there other items that we think we need for Springtown meeting, or is this it? This was all I can remember.
George, what do you think about the solar?
Solar changes?
Yeah.
I don't know whether we can get those in in time unless we can, there's a lot that we're considering right now, and yet they, they are valuable changes, but not necessarily right now.
So are these the things that you and I talked about yesterday?
Yes, yeah. It would involve the peer review for one thing.
Yeah.
And considering how the medical marijuana bylaw was handled by the Attorney General, it's clear that we don't have to include all zones for solar. We can take some of those out, which is really not practical.
Right, the, he's referencing, like Parker River Marine shouldn't be a solar farm.
Probably not a river.
Byfield Village.
Byfield. Byfield Village.
Green.
And there are some places where, some zones where it's just not practical.
Boy, it'd be nice if we could get that done.
Uh, I should mention that.
Oh, you, how, did you go to this thing yesterday?
We did. We did.
How, how, how was that?
It was.
Guard, a guarded response.
I'm hesitating a little bit. It, it was good as far as it went. It was a very short meeting. It was only half a day, less than half a day, and we got a meet, and we got an email about an hour and a half in advance that we never saw, that one of the principal speakers was ill, so she couldn't come.
Oh, dear.
But all that said, they gave us a little booklet, and I, I could drop this off to you, George, on things that they feel would speed things up. And what I was going to do, I was going to say this at the new business, is what I would try to do if you wanted to, is to make just a, a very brief summary of the things that they discussed and.
Be well worthwhile.
And they did specifically issue us a booklet. I got about three of them, so like, maybe what I should do is drop that off to you.
All right, yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay.
Okay, good.
There was another thing that came up on the recent meeting about solar with the selectmen. There were two references in the bylaw that referred to six-inch caliber trees, whether you had to replace them, and there was another section where whatever you cut, you had to replace. And they were not conflicting, but it was confusing.
That was taken out of our subdivision or something, wasn't it? Wasn't that, was that where that came from?
Well, some of it came from the state model. It, it got pulled from different places.
Yeah.
And some, some of those changes, I think, would be easy, like adding, adding a provision for peer review would be an easy insertion, and I think would make a lot of sense.
Yes. Right. And really for engineering only?
Well, any kind of.
You guys are running out of time, though. You've got to like do it soon.
Yeah.
No, we'd, we'd have to basically talk about it next time.
Well, yeah, it's going to be tight.
Usually we try to have it done by February, everything, so I'm saying, you know, this is going to be push, stressing you guys out if you do more and more in the next week or two weeks.
Right, 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 right. No, we know. Okay, other priority amendments? Nothing? Is that it?
There are always small things that we could do.
Yeah, well, let's, let's focus on this. This is what the ZBA wants us to do. Let's get it done. And if there's other things, fine, but let's not, there's too many things between the master plan and, and the subdivision regs. Let's not overload you. Okay, then I'm going to go down to the new business, Woodbridge School, we've dispatched with fiscal budget. Do you want to have a, do you have a discussion about that?
Yeah, just a quick one. Tracy has started the budgeting process for FY sixteen, and I had a meeting with her and Eileen week before last, just to, Eileen, first of all, wanted to get kind of a sense of, you know, what the planning board expenses and, and staffing and so on. One thing we did talk about, which has come up every year, is getting some clerical help for the office.
Try again.
And, you know, I, I think in particular, when the possibility of my being out for three or four months came up, I think it kind of came home to everybody.
Scared people to death, yeah.
So it's not clear how it might work. There may be somebody in town who would be willing to take on some extra hours, but it would be on a Friday. It's probably the kind of thing that, that, you know, wouldn't be a constant, we had talked about twelve hours before, but it might not be a constant twelve hours, but could be, you know, a little bit up and down.
It's a start, though.
But it's a start, so I just wanted to.
Yeah, but I wouldn't want to see this person work independently on Friday without, without you.
That could be hard to have them functioning without you being there.
No, I'd have to, yeah. That was the issue, so I would either have to be here or we would have to work something else out.
Work, just change the hours and whatever it may be. Okay.
But at, at least it's, it seems like it's, it's maybe a real possibility this year.
I wouldn't take that out ever until you get one, because there is a need. I just wouldn't.
I agree. I agree.
Would getting, would approaching a temp agency, would that, would that be something?
No, I, I don't think so. Really, and part of the issue is I, I am now really the only department in here who's a single-person department. You know, Sam, Doug, and Susan can all rely on each other. We've got two people, the assessors' office, several people dealing with finance. So it really, there needs to be somebody who at least has enough familiarity, who could answer the phone and, you know, or, or.
Give intelligent answers to questions, really simple questions.
Yeah, 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 or, or at least know which questions they can answer and which questions they shouldn't and that kind of stuff, so, as well as clerical help.
Yeah, the wrong answer can do a dreadful amount of damage. You know, there was a, yeah, I'll go over to that, but another town was.
And the other thing Tracy was interested in, and she's asked this every year, is, you know, what the goals are for the planning board this year. So I said the master plan, obviously, is, is the biggest, probably the biggest one. But if there are others that, that you want me to pass on to her, I will do that.
Well.
And the zoning.
Zoning, subdivision regulations, master plan, and open space plan.
Right.
It's enough.
One a quarter.
One a quarter.
Well, I would hope the subdivision isn't going to drift into the next fiscal year.
Into next fiscal year.
No, it's got to get out.
Hopefully not.
Has to get out. Okay. Planning Board Open Seat. So what I don't understand, George, when you were an associate and then became a member, I mean, it just happened, but what, how did that happen?
I replaced Linda.
Right, and how did you do?
And go for an election.
Was it automatic?
No, you have to, the board has to make a recommendation to the, the selectman.
I'm asking, I'm asking Mr. Morse.
Oh, when I came aboard, yeah. There was a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and they appointed me to serve.
And we, we made that recommendation?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, you haven't run, have you?
By the way, you're asking the wrong person, but that's okay. You should be asking Martha. She knows.
Martha knows everything.
Not quite.
If this makes it any easier, when you get somebody else to come on here, I mean, I'm very happy being an associate, if you felt that's best. I would also be very happy being a full-time member if that's best, but it doesn't make any difference to me. I've said this before, I would say it again. Whatever you felt was best, you know, would work best. If you, suppose you get an applicant that comes in and says, oh, I would only want to be a member of the, full voting member of the board, that wouldn't offend me slightly.
But I, what I, what I don't remember was we didn't have to advertise for this position.
We put a, we put a little PR thing in the newspaper, and it gets posted on the website.
And what did, what did the PR thing say?
Uh, basically that the, you know, the board was looking for at the time, a full-time member and an associate member, and just a little bit about the board, you know, kind of standard.
And so that was during the period of time when George was an associate member?
Well, I think that was when we were, um, yeah, well, no, it was after.
I, I know. Would you like to ask me, who knows what happened?
Yes. That's a Dave Mowery.
I'm not sure yet.
So what happened was is the board voted to recommend George.
Yes.
To fill the seat, and sent the letter to the selectmen. The selectmen said, no, we're not accepting this appointment. We don't know who this is. We want to actually, at the same time, we want to advertise. Do you remember that?
Well, that, that was, that was for the associate.
That's right.
And then. Associate seat.
And then what happened is, because they didn't know who he was, then we advertised, and then they got to know him, and then they, we went again, and we made the recommendation, and they accepted it.
Right, but then when, when Linda stepped down, George moved up into.
By election.
By election.
Right.
Well.
And then Richard came in upon David's departure to fill that out.
Well, and Elizabeth.
So I, I, I tell you.
And we advertised for both of those and made recommendations.
If we have to advertise, that means the advertising goes in, that means that Richard, or anyone does not come on the board until well after Kathleen is gone.
You should be voting on tonight to make an appointment to, for him to.
Now, is, but the selectmen don't meet until when?
They're meeting next Tuesday.
So if we took a vote tonight, they, it could be brought before then for next Tuesday?
Right.
Well, I suggest that's what we should do, because I think we're in a, a situation with absences and people not being here, that we need to have members on the board.
Need to call a selectman.
We need to have full bodies. So I don't, it's not for me to make this recommendation, but it's for others.
Is there something I'm supposed to say here?
No.
You're, you're suggesting that we go before the selectmen, immediately asking them for permission to solicit.
No.
No, with a name.
To appoint, to appoint Richard.
As a full member.
Oh, appoint Richard. Oh, okay, but we need more than that.
And then, and then, well, we don't know that yet until George wins or doesn't win.
But we'll still need an associate.
But we'll still need an associate.
Yes, so we'll need.
So to, that Richard become the full member and that we need an associate, and that's what we want to take before the board next Tuesday.
I'm fine with making Richard a full member. Right now, you have to replace Kathleen.
Right, right.
Right, and that's what we'd be doing.
Yes. The associate can wait for a little bit, right?
No, but we advertise for the associate.
Advertise the associate.
And that would be on Tuesday, and I won't be here. So, so maybe I can get to touch with Jeff ahead of time. Or if you saw Jeff.
I mean?
If you saw Jeff, just to.
I can see him if you want.
You know what I mean? Yeah.
Tell me what you want, just ask, can he please appoint Richard? Yeah.
Well, that.
We think it's a good idea.
Yeah, but that's what the planning board is going to recommend.
Recommend, that's what the planning board is going to recommend.
Yes.
I see him. I talk to him every day.
Oh, you do? All right, then, fine. Take care of it. Okay.
Do we have a motion?
So let's have a motion.
I move that the board recommend Richard Moss to the Board of Selectmen to be appointed to the Board as a full member.
Second.
Any further discussion on this?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Good. I'll, I'll get Jeff if I can too.
Anybody got any names?
When you're, when the.
People that might be interested?
No, we just went through this. We just went through this, and we didn't, you know, it took so long to find.
When the selectman go to vote for it, you should go to that meeting. They get offended if you don't show up.
To find Elizabeth.
I can understand that, yeah.
Just like what we did.
But I would want to know when the meeting ends.
Do you?
The guy that you had mentioned to me earlier today, I talked.
I think it's Tuesday.
They're posted, they're posted on the website.
Is the meeting on Tuesday? The selectmen's meeting? And should Richard go?
He tells us one thing too many at the time.
Richard should go to the meeting on Tuesday.
Yes.
Yes, Richard, you should be there Tuesday.
Yeah, I was just getting this.
Okay. Okay, there are, February meeting schedule, we took, took care of that. We will be meeting on February fourth and the eighteenth. And so could I have a call to disband?
Motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Done. Thank you, everybody.